No, we don't. Living hard.
Oh, let me see.
What do you use?
Some stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. One. Three. It's not on here. Six, seven, seven. So these were one, two, three. He just wrote six, seven. So we had. Where's the agenda? Where's the agenda? We can go by there. Where's the agenda? Yeah, that's where we got to go by the agenda. Okay? So, agenda, agenda. Two, three. It's only four things. Right? But we don't go on the agenda, not that, not that before. Okay, that's it. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, sir. It's my personal problem. Yes. I'm sending a email to the principal block to get a focus groups and get their opinions.
Uh-uh. No. You got everything right. One, two, three.
Good evening. Today is Monday, April 22nd, 2025. This is a regular session of the School Board Trustees of School City of East Chicago. The time is now 6:13. The place is Washington Elementary School, 2400 Cardinal Drive, East Chicago, Indiana. This is also being shown.
We are experiencing technical difficulty. We're not able to livestream, but this entire board meeting will be recorded and able to be viewed later.
And this is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. Mrs. Wright, roll call. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Smith. Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Present. Please stand.
Well, we can move the stage first or we can let them do it?
Okay. Okay. Oh, yes, that's right.
Color guard. Attention. Hearing colors. Forward march. Color guard. Hope. Preset colors.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Can we continue standing?
Please remain standing.
Can we, can we, can we, can we remain standing, please? Can we remain standing? I'd like to have a moment.
Center, face. Forward march. Hope. Colors. Center, face. Color, march.
Yes. Can we have a moment of silence for one of our teachers that was lost from Central High School? And then we have Nelsa, who lost her father. And then we have one of our own board members, Mercedes Taylors, who has lost her mother. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.03 is our mission statement to superintendent, Dr. Burnett.
Our mission, the school city of East Chicago is committed to developing a community of lifelong learners who are empowered to access, process, evaluate, and ethically apply information in an ever-changing global society.
Thank you. Item number 2.01, approval of the agenda. Madam President, I make the motion for approval of agenda.
Second.
Approval made by trustee Smith, second by trustee Gomez. Is there any comments from the board?
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Gomez.
Yes, I'd like to make a secondary motion with the removal of 6.02, 6.03, 6.04, and 6.07.
Is it 6.04 or 6.05?
I'm sorry, that was 6.05. My apologies.
And what other number?
6.02, 6.03, 6.05, and 6.07. These were discussed yesterday at the work session as topics that we wanted to remove for further information.
Can I get a motion?
That is a form of a motion, a secondary motion.
Secondary motion. I need a secondary motion. Second by trustee Smith. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King.
Yes. We would go to Washington Elementary.
Good evening, Board of School Trustees, Washington family, Washington students. You all did a great job. Give yourselves another hand. Washington Elementary, moving with intention, executing with purpose. We're going to move over to a video. You'll see something that you saw tonight, and you'll understand why they do what they do.
Good morning, Washington Cardinal family. We have some super scholars here giving leadership. They are in whose class?
This class.
And your names are?
Jaden.
Mariah.
Okay, here we go.
Good morning, Washington Elementary. We stand for the Washington pledge. I am a promise, I am a possibility. I am a promise for the capital P. I can be anything, anything I want to be. Now, please remain standing in place. Your heart is a treasure, allegiance. I pledge allegiance to your flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, and to God, and to the people of this team, justice for all. I promise to be respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. When I come to school every day, I promise to be myself. Have a great day.
Okay, you heard him. Have a great day. All right, it is the time for our social emotional learning and character plus point. Remember, social emotional learning is understanding and managing our emotions and feelings, while character is the inward values that determine outward actions, meaning the way in which we think, feel, and believe on the inside is shown on the outside through our vehicles. Cardinals, our brains and hearts are connected. The two work together to drive our emotions and behaviors. Our responsibility is to get rid of the negative thoughts and behaviors to allow the positive to shine through. Remember, we share common goals across this building, and that is to be on our best school behavior, to do our best schoolwork, and to achieve the best education possible at Washington Elementary. A quote for this week is, "With each new day, we have many opportunities to make good choices. Choose wisely, make it a mannerable one day." And Washington Elementary, as always, level up and let's get it.
It's.
Sh.
Uh.
Sh.
Good job. Your next word is. Why? Do you know why?
Because we have a big group.
Good afternoon, Washington Elementary. It is time to announce the attendance raffle winners for this week. These students have perfect attendance and no tardies. When you hear your name, please come down to the main office. Don Jacyon, Tia, Mia, Brooklyn, Honesty, Messiah, and Keith. Thank you. When you hear your name, please come down to the main office again. We have Keith, Messiah, Brooklyn, Tia, Mia, and Don Jacyon. Congratulations. Some collector prize in the main office. Thank you. Have a great day.
That right there is a day in the life of a Washington scholar. A day in the life of a Washington scholar. Washington Elementary core values and beliefs. Our school improvement plan is grounded in living up to our core values and beliefs. Specific core values and beliefs are one, that all students can learn. We believe that all students can learn if provided the resources and support needed to be successful. A safe and orderly environment. We believe that creating a safe and orderly learning environment allows for students and staff to function in a setting that is conducive to learning. Data-driven. We believe that the data analysis is significant and vital to supporting and servicing the whole child academically, socially, and emotionally, which is achieved through the MTSS process and our daily focus on SEL and character education. Just a little bit about our demographics. We are at 4, no, 442. We gained a student this, this morning. So we have 442 students. 58, or I'm sorry, 56 of those are kindergarten. 62 are first graders. 70 are second graders. 73 third graders. 54 fourth graders. 65 fifth graders and 61 sixth graders. Our special ed population consists of 72 students. Our EL population consists of 93 students. Out of those 93, 39 are Level 1 newcomers. And we are super duper excited, and we're still seeking out, searching, and looking for high ability students. We have 22. One is a kindergartner. One is a first grader. Six are in second grade. Four are in third grade. One is a fourth grader. There are six fifth graders, and there are three sixth graders. Washington Elementary would not function without our leadership team. If you're here, can you please stand when I call your name? Ms. Jessica Cammer, Assistant Principal. Mr. Lawrence Sandlin, Dean of Students. Our social worker, Ms. Lisa Gary Jones. Our EL specialist, Ms. Martha Purcell. Science of reading coach, Ms. Ruthie Burcher. Instructional coach, Ms. Eva Porres. She's, she's not a newcomer, but Ms. Stanethia Miller, Admin Intern. Now, we wouldn't be able to function without these wonderful people. In our school, we have some wonderful, wonderful, wonderful teachers. We have three kindergarten teachers. I'm not going to say their names, but if they are here, please stand. Three first grade. Three second grade. Three third grade. Two fourth grade. Two fifth grade. Three sixth grade. Three special ed teachers. And three allied arts teachers. I don't know if any of these people are here, but I would not dare leave those people out. Those are our paraprofessionals. They work closely. If you looked at the video, you were able to see the video. They work closely with our students in small groups during wind time. They support them during tutoring. They even come and hang out at some of the basketball games. So let's give it up for our paraprofessionals. Now, Washington staff's goals. Washington School Improvement Plan, SIP, goals. By the end of the 2020, 2024, 2025 school year, Washington is striving for 10% increase in student proficiency in ELA, 10% increase in student proficiency in math, decrease in suspension rates by 10%. Can we do it, boys and girls? Can we do it, boys and girls? Absolutely. And as you all know, we're in the process of our iLearn testing window, which is from April 14th through May 9th. I'm going to turn it over to an individual by the name of Ms. Jessica Cammer. She works closely with Dr. Ganders, collecting of data.
Hello. Save the fun stuff for me. First thing is the NWEA data. This is our current data for the winter session. We will retest again in spring, so we have our reading and math. And then in May 5th to the 16th, we will take the end-of-the-year NWEA test. And then in March, we just took the iRead 3 state test. We currently have, we're undergoing after-school tutoring three days a week. Students are receiving iRead interventions and tutoring. We are proud to say that 78% of our second and third graders are attending tutoring, and they've been doing a really great job, working hard. Washington currently has 40 students, and we're striving for more, register for summer school to receive additional iRead interventions. And then the iRead retest windows, we will retest in May and then again in summer in June. To support our scholars, to help them be successful, we do have programs, tutoring, and interventions that are provided at Washington. We have four programs, Reading Horizons Elevate and Discovery. We also have Elevate Express that we've been using with our iRead tutoring students. We also have Elevate Express that we've been using with our, um, iRead tutoring students. Uh, students use Success Maker in class, which is, uh, goes along with their SABAS program. We have wind time daily and small groups. Uh, our exceptional learners use the Readable English program, and our EL students use Language Power, and then we have Redbird and Alex for math support. Uh, Washington has offered several forms of tutoring throughout the year. We started in the fall with Silven. Uh, Silven came in and did, uh, primarily iRead, um, ELA tutoring for second and third grade students. And then we started in end of January-ish, we did, um, second semester, which was primarily focusing for the upper grades for iLearn, and then for second and third grade, again for iRead, um, reading interventions, um, that was another after-school tutoring. Uh, currently, we have our iRead tutoring that's going on three days a week, um, until May. And then we offered, um, Huntington did come in and offer iLearn tutoring for reading and math. That was during the school day. They serviced, um, students in small groups for grades four through six. And then we are happy to announce that we do have two, um, very amazing interventionists, um, at Washington that work really hard with students. Uh, Mr. Collins, he is our math interventionist. He works with the Tier Three, um, math kiddos in grades three through six. And Mrs. Collins is our reading interventionist, who works with our Tier Three students in grades K through three. Um, another important, uh, for the success of our teachers and scholars is the professional development. It is offered in several different ways at Washington. We do have Tuesday, Thursday PLCs, which are professional learning communities. This is where grade levels, um, teachers come into the data room and they meet with either the leadership team, the STC, or either the coaches to receive professional development. We also have our building tech leaders, um, that put on professional development for parents and also for teachers. Uh, we do early release Wednesdays where it's a combination, the leadership team could be putting on a professional development, the coaches, or sometimes even other staff members will put on professional development for classroom management or any other strategies that they've learned and like to share. Uh, we are very happy to, um, uh, and thankful for our partnerships with parents. We do connect with one church, one school. Uh, we have monthly parent chat and chew meetings with the principal, uh, where parents come into the parent room and receive information. We also do parent in services, and this would be my segue to like Skyward training, April 25th, 9:00 AM, parent room, flyers on the table. Um, so we do do in services monthly for different things, technology, um, our social worker, Ms. Lisa Gary Jones, also does her, um, different in services for parents as well. Um, something that I'm super proud of and, um, have started here at Washington or kind of taken over as well is attendance. Um, to boost attendance for Washington, um, uh, I started an incentive program. Uh, students get monthly perfect attendance awards, and this is kind of different because this isn't, you don't have to continually have a perfect attendance from the start. Each month, if you're here every day with zero tardies, you get recognized for your perfect attendance for that month. Um, the breakdown for each of the months are there. Um, each student, when I come into their class, I present them with a certificate and a goodie, and the class gets to celebrate them. So it kind of boosts other people to kind of want to come to school every day so that they could also receive it. They're already bugging me because I'm, I'm running late on my, my, you know, my, uh, March ones, but I'll get them to you guys, I promise. Um, we also do weekly and semester, uh, perfect attendance. So weekly, um, at the end of the week, I run a report to see who has perfect attendance percentage. Um, the class is kind of compete, so whoever's class has the highest attendance percentage, they win, and then following week, I bring them popsicles for lunch, so they get to have a treat for their class being the highest attendance percentage. Um, we did semester Sundays, so if you can make it through the whole semester with perfect attendance, then you get to come down for a quick little show and some sundae. And then we do the weekly raffle winners, like was on the video. Um, if you have perfect attendance, your teacher gives you a raffle ticket, and then I pull five to 10 names a week. You get to come down and get a prize, and we recognize you over the intercom. Um, another highlight, uh, that we want to put in here, it's not on a slide, but, um, at a previous school board meeting, we, uh, showcased our musical talent with our Black History Month presentation. So tonight, we would like to share our artistic talent on the walls with you. Um, this art is made by sixth grade students each year. It is, um, a legacy that they leave behind. It's something that they are able to decorate. They do, they work really hard with Mr. Labarski, our amazing art teacher. Um, we are very thankful to have him for instilling a love for art and scholar. And now I will hand this over to Ms. Miller, our Admin Intern.
Alrighty, so, uh, here at Washington, extracurriculars allow our scholars to have a well-rounded school experience. Um, and this year, we were able to offer cheerleading, volleyball, girls and boys basketball, newspaper, STEM club, and student government. Um, and I want to say thank you to our teachers who head those programs so that the kids have the opportunity to do what they do. Um, we want to also thank you all for attending the several events we had this year that helps to strengthen our homeschool community connection. We held Loteria Night, um, in August to September. Um, during October and November, we had our open house, our American Education Week, Lunch with Someone Special, and Red Ribbon Week. Um, coming up in the winter, we had our, oh my God, I can't. Oh yeah, Winter Spirit Week, thank. Our literacy night, and also our 100th Day of School Celebration. Um, and lastly, the past two months, we held our Black History Month program, our iRead Walking Pep Rally, and Read Across America. So thank you, staff, students, and families for supporting us in those events. Coming up for our end of year celebrations, we would like to see some participation and support with Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, our annual school-wide science fair for grades K through six, our Family Spring Fling, Arcade of Five award ceremonies, our Sports Banquet Field Day, and our sixth grade luncheon and promotion. Please see the table outside of the auditorium for flyers for some of those upcoming events. Lastly, we want to give a wonderful round of applause to our boys and girls basketball teams. Um, they took first place in our championships, and we're very appreciative of all the hard work and effort that they put in, so thank you for that. And that's it from Washington.
Madam President.
Yes, uh, Trustee Rodriguez.
I'd like to, um, to, just to make a motion, uh, to approve the Item Two Agenda as amended.
Item Two?
We had a secondary motion by Trustee Gomez, now we have to approve the agenda.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Can I get a motion approved, uh, of the agenda? Oh, you already approved it? Okay, alright, thank you. Okay. Now we'll, we'll go to, um, zero point, 3.02.
Madam President, we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can, can I get a second? The motion that Trustee Rodriguez made?
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Madam, yes. Trustee, uh, Gomez.
Uh, there was a secondary motion made, and, uh, there was a second to that motion. I, I thought we voted on that.
I thought we did.
My understanding of the secondary motion was to remove certain items?
Yes.
And that was approved, and now the agenda has to be approved as amended with those items removed?
Right, because I didn't call off 0.2, 0.2, so we're doing it right now. So it's second by Trustee Smith. Madam Secretary, roll call.
And just one, one clarification, so this is going to be the approval of the agenda as amended, correct?
That's correct.
Right, with the items, with the items removed, right?
Yes.
The items removed.
Okay, I'm good.
Yes, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. Now we go to, uh, 3.02, our student, Mr. Egger. Hey, thank you.
Okay, so now we will have the following students come down from the Atlanta trip, and we want to show you guys a video to show our appreciation and to represent what we were down there in Atlanta doing.
Excuse me, can we pause that? I had, I have a speech.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, honey, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On behalf of all the students, we want to express our deepest thanks for the incredible opportunity to tra- to travel to Atlanta, Georgia. This trip was unforgettable and wouldn't have been possible without the generosity, dedication, and belief in us. From exploring new places, to learning more about our history, culture, and each other, every moment was filled with excitement, discovery, and inspiration. Whether it was visiting historic landmarks, bonding with friends, or simply exploring a new city, we created memories that will stay with us for a lifetime. Your support showed us that how much we, you, you care not only about our education in the classroom, but about helping us grow through real-world experience. We are so grateful to be a part of the school, a school district that invests, invests in its students and opens doors to new opportunities. Thank you for making this journey possible. We come back with not only photos and souvenirs, but with fresh perspectives, new friendships, and greater appreciation for the community that stands behind us. With this, we have created a video to show our experiences, of our experiences, to show our appreciation. This is us at the airport. Before the flight. This was a very hectic moment, we only, almost lost some people. A luxury bus service, thank you. We were asleep. We made it to Tuskegee University.
Alright, alright.
The food was amazing. We watched line dancing, and I joined. This was the beginning of the tour. We made it to Alabama State. The beginning of the tour. We got to watch the campaigning of, for Miss University, Miss University, it was a great experience, and me and Olivia joined their line dancing as well. I woke Nani up. This is on our way to the aquarium. We found Nemo, guys. We got to see albino alligators. We made it to a world of Coca-Cola. Tried some unreleased Coca-Cola samples. This was us eating. We made it to the mall. This was us laughing at dinners at Maggiano's. Maggiano's. At the Magma Award event. On our way home. Edgar being the leader that he is. And this is just the pictures that we took.
This was only possible because of the generosity that this school board did to fund this trip for us. We greatly appreciate you guys for giving us this opportunity, and we wish that this opportunity for other trips are given to other students that are likely to succeed as well. This has very motivated us to continue on, and this was just a great trip overall. Thank you guys very much.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, can we have all the students introduce themselves?
Yes, in a few.
Could you all introduce yourselves, please?
Soon as the music stop. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Ray Williams.
Okay.
I'm Nigel Green.
Olivia Bates.
Nigeria Anderson.
Greg Brown.
Leela Edmonds.
And this concludes our trip report that we have presented to you guys. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. Yeah, we're going to, we, we got a trustee, we want to say something before you all leave. Um, Trustee Smith? I just want to say. I just want to say that, um, thank you board, thank you chaperones and the counselors that went with our children on this trip. This was the first time that we've done anything like this, but I guarantee you, it will not be the last. Yes. This is what a school district is about, to enhance our children's expectations, to have them to explore that there is a bigger world than East Chicago, and to give them the incentive to be the best that they possibly could be. So I'd like to thank the stakeholders, we're just the taxpayers, I don't want to leave you out because your money paid for some of this too. So I just want to say thank you. Um, I'm just overwhelmed, I cried during the whole thing, so everybody knows I'm a crybaby when it comes to these children, so. This is not the first time, and we will try to have, uh, a bigger, uh, college tour, which is something we have to plan. We have to plan and teach our children that we have to move, take small steps in order to get to the bigger picture. So thank you all for watching that video, and thank you for being supportive. Ms. Yanders, I don't know if we could have done this without you, uh, trustee, um, um, uh, trust, Trustee Gomez, uh, because he's over Q or whatever his position is. He has so many positions now, you know, he's big dog now, but anyway. But because of him, we made this, our board made this possible. Thank you once again. Pardon? Oh, and, oh, oh, and mainly Ms. Simmons.
You can't forget the money.
For writing the checks, thank you sweetheart. Yes, we want to, and thank you, Trustee Smith.
I want to thank Harrison School for your performance, as well as Mrs. Hogan, your principal of Washington, I'm sorry, Washington School for your performance. I want to thank Mrs. Hogan. I want to thank those that were involved in this before you all leave out. You did an extraordinary job. What you seen in the presentation for the students that was able to go on this trip with us to Atlanta, these are some of the things that we're going to be trying to put together for you all as well. Some of the things that you all need to go and see for your dreams of where you want to go. So we just want to thank you all for coming here and being a part of this. So we can take a recap? So they can leave? Oh, okay. All right then. Okay, I'm sorry. Dr. Bornet, your presentation, please.
Good evening, School Board. This is my superintendent's report for April 22, 2025. Today is National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. The bus driver is the first friendly staff member to greet our students each day, but I want to acknowledge not just our bus drivers today, but the bus aides who attend to the needs of our riders, the mechanics who keep our buses running safely, and dispatchers to do the routes to make it possible for every student to attend school every day. Thank you. This week is also Public Schools Volunteer Week. It is a special time to recognize and celebrate the incredible contributions of volunteers who support our schools and students throughout the year. Today, we have over 108 volunteers who help schools and students on a daily basis. We say thank you. Tomorrow is National Administrative Professionals' Day. We want to acknowledge our main office staff of secretaries, clerks, and registrars who keep our schools running smoothly. And on behalf of this school district, the school city of East Chicago, we want to invite all of our parents to Attend Parent University, which will be held Saturday, May 3, at East Chicago Central High School. Spring sports season continues, including baseball, softball, boys and girls track, unified track, boys golf, and girls tennis. The boys' baseball team is on a roll with some great victories in the past week, beating Bowman Academy 18-3 and Hammond Central 10-9. We want to encourage all of our school community to please come out and support our baseball team as well as our other spring sports. Middle school boys and girls soccer is underway. We have an eight-day soccer fundamentals camp that's kicked off in our elementary schools. This is part of our plan to develop our programs at the elementary level to make really robust student athletes when they get to performing and competing at the high school level. Coach Allah debuted the EC Hoops Elite AAU season for our 3th through 7th graders. Congratulations to him. Senior night for track and field is this Thursday, April 24, and the winter sports banquet is planned for Tuesday, April 29. One more comment before I close my report. The Strategic Planning Committee met last week to provide feedback on our draft mission and vision statements and core values. We are so excited about the progress we are making and moving towards having a fully-realized five-year strategic plan to start the '25-'26 school year. And now I'm going to ask Coach Allah and our athletic director, Mr. Gordon, as well as the proud principal of Washington Elementary School, and the coaches for both our girls' and boys' basketball team, because they ended with exciting championship games that were well-attended, taking home the '25 Elementary Basketball Championship, Boys and Girls. East Chicago Girls' Basketball, '25.
All right now.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Bornet. Once again, thank you all. Now we'll go to 4.02, Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Simmons. Good evening.
Madam, excuse me. Madam President?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor just texted. She's having difficulty hearing. I'm not sure if there's something you can do to help on her end.
Anything you can do, can we? Oh. Okay, we need to talk louder then.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm coming to give an update on our capital projects that will be going on this summer. One capital project that will be going on is the Central High School restrooms. We actually have got the contract for that one, and that one is in legal review right now. So that one will be moving a little bit faster.
See, that's what I was trying to do. Okay. Something, and I don't hear. Oh. Oh, okay. Okay, Ms. Simmons, make a check. We turn you back on. Speak loud, though.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I'm going to speak a little bit more into this. So I'm going to repeat the first capital project that has the contract already produced, and that is the capital project for the restrooms being remodeled at Central High School. That contract is up under legal review at this time. The next contract that will be resented to the board would be the contract for, I'm sorry, would be the contract for the staircase in the pool section of Central High School. We met with the vendor today, and he is drawing up that contract to start also. The next contract after that, which is also connected to the pool and the staircase in the back of Central, is going to be the contract for the elevator. So the elevator and the new common area in the back of Central High School is going to be under construction also. That will probably, will not, probably can start until probably mid-spring of 2026 due to the fact that we have to get the back staircases and the pillars in the pool together at Central. The next contract I do for the HVAC, we will have that in review as of this Friday. That will go to legal review. We will go out for bid hopefully by next Friday. So we're moving very quickly on these projects due to the fact that we got short time, and we got a short time to get in before increases of taxes of materials. That is a very big concern of our contractors, is that we need to get the bid out before we get the increase on materials. Next thing I would like to address also will be the financial report that I gave the board prior to becoming now. This is our current finances of the district. I am sorry, Trustee Taylor. I will email you a copy this evening. This is our current finances of the district. As you see, we're moving forward in a positive way. We are in the process of getting a $6.5 million bond. We will close on that, I do believe, May 21. We are out for bid now to get the lowest interest rate that we can get. So everything is moving quickly. The summer will be very busy in the district, but at the end result, we will have new upgrades for Central High School and others. Also, we also have three vendors that we're contacting for the tennis court. We're going to have three vendors do it separately so we can get it all done within a good time span. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Very much. Thank you. Anybody got questions? No. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Simmons. Okay, the consent agenda? Are there any comments from the public for the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Taylor? Is there any? I'm sorry, Smith? Is there any comments, is there any words from the board? Any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Gomez? Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. New business. Approval of the personnel report, 6.01. Are there any questions from the audience? There a motion to approve the personnel report?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 6.01, approval of the personnel report.
Madam President, I'll second that motion.
Made by Trustee Smith and second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. 6.04, approval of the MOU East Chicago Federations of Teachers Local 511, AFT Article 4. Are there any comments from the audience? Can I get a motion?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.04.
Motion by Trustee Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. 6.06, approval of Inner Vision International Parent University. Can I get any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board? I'm sorry. Can I get a motion made for 6.06?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 6.06.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Are there any questions of the board of trustees?
Madam President, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Trustee Taylor?
Do we know exactly how many parents we have registered?
Dr. Bornet?
You will get the board that information on enrollment and registration for the parent university.
Did you hear that, Trustee Taylor?
No.
Okay.
We will get the school board follow-up with.
I may have to probably share my questions a different way because I could not hear the response.
We will follow up. We will follow up with the school board regarding the registration status for our parent.
Got it. Okay. Another question I have, could someone share a little bit about, a little bit more about the recruitment efforts and the advertising efforts that we've made?
There are team members on the committee, Mr. Torres and Mr. Bayard, come to the mic.
Good afternoon. As part of the Committee for the Parent University, we make great efforts in order to advertise this to our parents by way of robo calls. We had flyers, and all of this was in both languages. We had registration forms. A video announcement from our superintendent was posted on our website. And also Mr. Jeremy Torres has also posted it to our website. And I believe our principals also had a little video as well.
So our principals got together. Jeremy Torres and Ms. Hope Stovall came together to record a video of all the principals and then combine them and post it on our website, our social medias, including Instagram, Facebook, X, along with the superintendent message that was sent out today, along with the flyers that have been repeatedly posted on Class Dojo by our principals, on their Facebook or their specific schools. So there has been efforts along with printing larger post boards where they have been on the entryway of all the schools and also the admin building.
Okay. And can you share a little bit about how were the topics decided for this session or for this event? Who came up with these topics?
So the keynote speaker was somebody that we had spoken to on several occasions, and we decided to go with him. But the breakout sessions, the team came up with on different topics based on what we thought the parents would be interested in and what would be most informational for the parents.
Okay, and I guess I'm trying to get to how did we arrive to the decision that these topics was what our district needed?
So there are some new changes that are happening downstate we feel our parents need to know. One of them being the new grad requirements. So we thought that was a very important session that our parents need to be aware of. Another one with our elementary students, it was to maintain their academics during the summer. So we'd be working with them on their reading activities and math activities. So everyone just highlighted what we felt the, or working with our own individual curriculum department or English Language Department or even our student support services. We just looked at our trends of things that are happening and then just more previously recent topics that we think our parents need to know. So it was kind of a roundtable. And we also used ideas from the committee to create those as well.
As well as dental work, so please forgive me.
I like those topics that you just highlighted, but not seeing that reflected on this keynote speaker's agenda. It's kind of concerning because, I mean, it is a large dollar amount. I'm not, I'm maybe going to sugarcoat that. I would have liked to see this to be more geared towards, you know, the climate and the pressing issues as it speaks to our school district. So that's why I'm asking, how did we, how did we come up with the, with the ideas of these being the topics? You know, I feel like us as a school district, we have this specific one. I mean, Washington Elementary just did their presentation earlier. And, you know, they have 93 EL students, 39 being Level 1 newcomers. Being that I believe Parent University, I think this is an event that only happens once a year, which means we get one shot.
Right, right.
From, for the parents to somehow help navigate our kids' education. And I'm speaking from experience. So what, how does the topics that are outlined on this keynote speaker's presentation going to help target those areas or those, you know, those items that are pressing to our school district specifically? I mean, immigration is huge. We have, you know, again, we need to really educate our parents on how to better navigate our students' education. I guess I was, I was looking for something like that, a little bit more, you know, specific to our school district. What was just stated, I like those, but I will see that bullet points on this keynote speaker's presentation.
Yeah, so his keynote speech is going to come, be universal. He has a lot of experience of working with other districts similar to ours. The immediate sessions that will be, the breakout ones that will be offered twice are the ones that speak directly to our parents. That will be the more intimate sessions that we felt were relevant. And we do have an immigrant lawyer coming and doing a session specifically for that. And I think Dr. Yanders mentioned she had a session as well.
I don't, I don't have a session, but I'm saying when we met with the speaker, when we initiated the Parent University, he asked us and surveyed us, I'm sorry, I had dental work. He surveyed us about issues that were pertinent to our community. And some of the things that came out of that, one of the biggest things I know for us at the secondary level is vaping. And so he talked about an activity that he could possibly do with parents when it comes to vaping. And then he showed us some of his presentations on vaping.
That's another one.
Right, so that was one of the ones, helping his, helping our parents to monitor students at home. We live in a digital world. So making sure that they can go onto our platforms and monitor the students' performance. And we do have a breakout session given by Mrs. Johnson on helping our parents do Skywork, going to Skywork and looking at student progress.
The breakout sessions are going to be facilitated by who?
The staff.
Okay.
My, my question. I'm sorry. Trustee Taylor, you can finish.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I hate that we don't have the number of parents that we have registered because that, that really weighs in a lot on how my feeling about this. But that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Trustee Taylor. Trustee Smith. My only concern was, when did you all come up with this particular program? How long did it take you to come up with this program?
Yeah, this is, this is nothing new. We've done.
No, I'm not talking about the Parent University. I'm talking about this, I'm talking about this, this particular program that day. How long did it take you all to come up with that?
Well, we've been meeting for a couple of months now as a committee.
Okay, so my concern is, I have nothing against that, but you missed a step. The first step is, you can't have anything like that unless you have board approval, especially when there's finances involved. You can do this, there's nothing wrong with it, but you missed a step. We have to approve this. If you knew this was coming, you should have met with us along with the superintendent and explained to us the reason why you're having this. We didn't, the topics that you were having and the cost of it. That was not happening. So to me, as a taxpayer, I would rather see my money go to a parent university prior to me knowing what my tax dollars is paying for. So you missed a step. When you miss a step, you miss an opportunity for your children. Do you understand what I'm saying? I'm not chastising anybody. I'm just letting you know, you don't have the authority to spend that kind of money unless it's voted on. Because we have to answer the State Board of Account. So all I'm saying is, when you make a move like that, think about the consequences behind it. The parent university is no problem. The speaker is, because that phenomenal amount. And we have speakers, I'm going to just give you one. We have speakers here who's been in this district forever that knows this district.
Yes, they do.
And I'm going to call her name, Ms. Linda Randolph. I mean, we didn't have to go outside the realm to get that. I'm not arguing. I'm just upset about the cost. We have teachers. We have other, Ms. Yanders. I'm just saying. You have to think in terms of finances. There's protocol. Understand this. I have nothing against the university. It's protocol. Thank you, Trustee Smith. Are there any more questions from the board?
I know that somebody had asked how many parents we had registered. We have approximately 49 so far.
And I was told the other day it was 500.
No, I think that's what our goal is.
Yeah, right, the goal is, but we had already heard what the, what the, the people that had signed up for, we had already heard that. Okay. Are they, hello, yes, Trustee Smith? I mean, Trustee Taylor?
I'm sorry, you said that number was 49?
Yes.
I, I think there is a little bit more. We're going to wait for the official count to come in to Dr. Bornet, and then he can share that official count with the board.
And this is scheduled for next Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay. And I believe yesterday Ms. Stovall stated that last year we had 119?
No, we did not conduct ones prior to COVID. So this is the first one since COVID.
Since COVID, oh, I thought she stated that yesterday. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, we're, and I think this was stated yesterday, but I didn't write it down. What fund is this coming out of?
This is allocated from the title money that's directly allocated from the state that says it's for family engagement specifically. So that's where this event is being funded from.
So that's Title I?
Title I, correct.
Is it Title I only? Title?
No, only Title I. I believe a certain percentage of that fund has to be spent towards family engagement.
I think that since when we have been having these parent university engagement, that the title money, this has always been spent out of that. So it's not like it's nothing new. Okay, so we already knew that. Pardon? Right, right. So, okay. Well, Ms. Alvarez is not here, thank you. So is there a motion? Can I get a motion? Oh, did I get one? Okay, can I? Yes, Trustee Rodriguez.
Madam Secretary, do we, do we, do we have a motion for?
Right. So we already got the motion. So I'm asking now for the approval.
Roll call.
For roll call.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor? Trustee Taylor?
No.
Madam President, Gibson King?
No. Now we'll move on to our public forum.
If you signed up to speak, if you could, please step to the podium. State your name and your address. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please be respectful of the board, the staff, and the audience that are present.
All right, the first person is Jonathan Alaya.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jonathan Alaya. I am a junior in East Chicago Central High School. And you all have two copies of a petition that I created.
Yes.
With the help of trustee member Jesse Gomez. I addressed to him the issue of uniform policy. And I understand that it's titled plan to get, to ban uniforms. While I was conducting the signatures, people, students were telling me, why do I want to get rid of uniforms? And now my initial, my statement is, instead of banning uniforms, give us the option to dress down. And here is why. Whenever I come, I used to go to Hammond Central High School in School City of Hammond. We are, we and Gary are the only districts in Lake County that have uniforms. Lake Central has a strict dress down policy. Crown Point has a strict dress down policy. Munster has a strict dress down policy. I feel like we, as School City of East Chicago, we deserve change. And if you guys want rules, I accept the rules. But what I want to do is, one year, one school year of giving us the option of a uniform or a dress down. If you see that the dress code violations increase in the 2025, 2026 school year, then we go back to the uniforms. Another reason why I want to do this is because I believe that we as students have a reason to wake up in the morning and look at ourselves and wear something that represents us. That uniform does not represent us. It represents millions and millions of Americans that wear, of students that wear uniforms. Now, I go to a very dark statement regarding families that have three or more children. You can go to Old Navy, Walmart, or Target and get a polo shirt between $5 to $15. A cargo pants between $15 to $30. Let's say you get, you have five kids. You get a pair of, two pair of pants, $30 each, $60. A pair of, three pairs of polos, $5. Five dollars, $15 in total, $75. You have five kids. That's already, that's already almost $400 in spending. And then you have to multiply that with school, with, you have to multiply that with school supplies. If parents, if parents can't afford the, if parents have to give their kids a ride to school, that's gas money, food, daycare. And I feel like.
Sir, that concludes your, your message. If you want to, you want to give a final statement?
Yes. So concluding all of this, I believe that the School City of East Chicago should consider the dress down policy for next year. Thank you very much, and have a blessed day.
Next person, Ray Castaneda.
Hi, how you doing? With one of you guys is.
Mr. Castaneda, can you state your name and address for the rest?
Ray Castaneda, 4828 Cary Street. So I come to address an issue with Jesse Gomez. He seen me in the crowd earlier, and he walked out and has not been back. So I got an issue, I got a, a comment on my post that he made to a young 23-year-old woman, which was inappropriate. Right here, it says, Elizabeth Vargas, where do you like to be grabbed at? Asking for Trump. LMFA. So I got copies here for every single one of y'all. If you guys would like a copy of this from my Facebook post that he had made.
Madam President? Yes. If I could, if you'd like to make a complaint, if you can stay after the meeting, I'd be happy to take whatever material you have and share it with the board.
So I also want to read something else too, that I looked up. If you guys give me one second, it'd just be real brief. So right here, I got this. It says, School City of East Chicago. The Board of East, the Board of School Trustees of the School City of East Chicago Code of Ethnic. And in line two, it says, I understand that I represent the, well, it says before that, School Board Agreement. Number two, I understand that I represent the entire school community at all times. Number three, I understand that all social media accounts I maintain are in public domain, and therefore any information, comments, photos, and other texts or media generated from or posted to those accounts can reflect upon my position with the board. can reflect upon my position with the board. I therefore agree to conduct myself in the same manner on these platforms as I behave in, in any pub, as I would behave in any public forum, in, forum, in accordance with these arrangements. So what he did was violated everything he, everything he signed when he did that social media post. And, you know, that, like I said, the young woman, this guy was old enough to be her grandfather. He was only 23 years old. And with this guy being on the school board, should not be allowed any child in East Chicago. So you guys should think, and I just got one question before I'm done. You know, I mean, are, do you guys agree with his actions? Do you guys condone his actions? Or not even his actions, what his post was? No, that's it. But just, I would be giving you guys a copy of what he had posted on my post.
I'll get that for me in a second.
Next we have Helen Steinbach. Please state your name and address for the record.
Helen Steinbach, 5207073rd Avenue, Maryville, Indiana. I came to say thank you for addressing the MOU that we agreed to tonight. I appreciate that. Because I have teachers doing a lot of extra work outside of their regular contract, and this will make it available for them to get paid. I also want to piggyback off of Mr. Castaneda's statement. And Mr. Gomez is not the first time that he's done this. You guys all have received my complaint before.
Next, we have Bria Dates. Bria Dates, Bria Dates. Next, we have Kenneth Mobley. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kenneth Mobley, 3819 Evergreen Street, East Chicago, Indiana. I'm here as the union steward representative of the Transportation Department. We negotiated our contract almost six and a half weeks ago, and we would like to get the paperwork so that within next week or two weeks, we can vote on our contract. So it could be on the board agenda at your next meeting to be approved. I have my coworkers asking, what's taking so long? We had real good communication with the administration, a negotiation team, with our transportation negotiation team. We had three sessions, and we came to an agreement, tentative agreement, but we haven't seen the paperwork yet. So we can vote on it. So like I said, it could be on your agenda next school board meeting, because they, my coworkers are asking me questions, and I try to answer them honestly, what's going on. Because I do, I tell them that after meetings, the negotiation team that the administration had, I ask them questions after the meeting. So hopefully, we can get the paperwork so that within next week or two weeks, hopefully next week, we can vote on it so that it would be on your board agenda at the next school board meeting. And we'll get together if, if we can have our voting over at the administration building like we had last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Elizabeth Vargas.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Vargas. I just want to start by giving a little background of me. I was born and raised in East Chicago and spent some of my elementary and high school years in East Chicago. So I have a lot of love for my hometown and its people. But today, I've come to express my feelings towards a specific person, and that person would be Jesse Gomez. I believe that no matter who we are or what we believe in and who we support, should not be a reason for someone to consistently harass and mistreat you, especially a person who works for a school board and especially for children. Dear Jesse Gomez constantly harasses me on social media and downplays my knowledge as a woman. Jesse Gomez decided to go on social media and asked me where would I like to be grabbed at under a comment that I had put to someone else, which personally made me feel sick, especially coming from somebody old enough to be my grandfather. And he thinks it's okay to ask someone like 10 times younger than him where they want to be grabbed at. Jesse Gomez is a bad representation of East Chicago, and I would like to have something further done about him. Thank you.
Sorry. Next, we have Sandra Perez. Sandra Perez. Sandra Perez. Madam President, that concludes our public comment.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. And now we go into our trustee remarks. Trustee Taylor, can you hear me? Trustee Taylor?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you. We're gonna go into our trustee remarks. If you have anything to say.
Oh, you're starting with me? Sorry.
Oh, yes. Yes.
It's been very difficult to hear. Everything has been like on and off, in and out muffled. So forgive me if I sound like I'm not engaged. I'm really trying to, to connect here. But really quickly, I'll just say thank you all for your prayers and support during this time. It truly means a lot to me and my family as we navigate the loss of my mom. It's been a long eight-month journey, but the Lord loved her more than, than me. So I'm okay with that. Just really quickly, from what I was able to hear from the presentation, Ms. Hogan, that was a beautiful presentation, by the way. I love seeing how the students, you have the students starting off their day with declarations. I think that's powerful. You know, shaping their mindset in the morning really sets the tone for how they're gonna approach the rest of the day. So I think that's a, that's a great way to get them engaged. I, again, I'm gonna keep it short today because it's just been, been a little hectic week. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. Trustee Rodriguez?
I'm just gonna make it short as well. I just want to thank the Washington students for their great presentation, Madam Principal, and her staff, faculty, as well as teachers. This week was a, is a pretty busy week for, for me. We had a National School Board Association Board of Directors meeting. So just to let you know, I think the goal for me is to really put School City of East Chicago on a, on a national map. I think we've done it so far with the Magna Award. There are several other awards that are, are coming, and hopefully some grants with the Junior ROTC program. Given my role as, as the chair for the, for Q, I don't sit on the awards committee, but I think, I think they're starting to realize that we're doing something here in East Chicago. So just keep it up, keep motivated, keep positive, and good things are gonna come our way. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Smith? I have no comments, except for, thank you, Ms. Hogan, for your presentation. I said no comments, but then I'm thanking you. And I admire, I admire the artwork that your children displayed. I just, I just want to say this, from the bottom of my heart, the children are the first, my first priority as far as I'm concerned in this district. What we've shown you all is what we want to show in the future. We have to work together. I wasn't trying to be mean or, or take away your parent university. But if we don't start setting precedence to getting things in order, what's the, what's the purpose of a strategic plan? Everything must be done decent and in order. In order for us to make it and to continue to follow proper protocol, we must obey the district policies. It's nothing against anybody. But if we don't start doing this now, and you know that right now, we're in the midst of federal dollars being cut. So if we, if we don't start watching our pennies, then some of you all are gonna be laid off, and we might not even be here. And then the state will take over. Then you won't have any programs. So I'm just trying to let you understand and know that. It's nothing against the parent program, university. I get it. I want them to have it. But when you're spending that type of money, you must know proper protocol. I'm a businesswoman. I know.
Yes.
Everything has a check and balance. And before, and as of 25, 26, if we don't start checking the balances now, and that goes for us also, we don't start checking the balances, guess what? Our doors are gonna close. And some of our people are gonna be laid off. So you have to be very, very, use the resources that we, we have an abundance of resources in this community. We have abundance of resources, not just Ms. Randolph. We have an abundance of resources. We have principals. Everybody knows what our district need. We don't have to go out of, out of our district to get a, 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 a person to come and speak. We all know. Parents have always told us, what? We need a class to teach us how to do the math. Is that part of the class of the university, the parent university, to teach parents how to do the new math? Those are things, and the parent university is supposed to be there to support the parents. We get all the programs together, but let's do it decent and in order. That's all I'm saying. If not, the doors are gonna start closing. It's up to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Smith. Yes, and I want to thank the, all of our students that was here again. I think I have something that, we went to the baseball, Cardinals baseball. We were there at the Railcats with a game, watching our students play. I believe they played River Forest. And then, yesterday, they was at Block Stadium. And they played, let's see here. Well, they played, who did they play? HAZES. They played HAZES, right? And so today, I was there today again, today, and they are, they are playing Century 21, Century 21. And they have a game to, yes, y'all have to excuse me now. Okay, and so tomorrow, they're gonna have a, a away game with Central and Gary Westside. So I did get a chance to meet one of Central High School, a young lady, that was the first young lady that played on our baseball team, Jasmine Becerra. And, and now her sister seems like she's following in her footsteps because she's on the team now, Jaclyn Becerra. So, you know, I like to support them as well, as a part of our Cardinal team, to give them some encouragement that we have not forgotten about them, which I know we haven't, but just, just to speak about them. So I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. And that will, that will conclude. You want to say something? Yes, okay, we're gonna have our student Edgar say something.
So I would like to give special thanks to, again, to the board, Dr. Bornet, Ms. Simmons, and Dr. Yanders for helping prepare for this college tour. It was very amazing. And I'd like to bring in the actual students to come here and give you guys the thanks with the entire group here. Although two of them couldn't make it, but we're very appreciative of this. I would also like to say my, send my prayers to Ms. Taylor's family, because losing a mother is very sad, and my prayers will be going to you. And then I want to say publicly for the record that I stand by Jonathan's motion to find a way, if we could test out how we could do this with the uniform progress and having no, having the dress down policy. If it's not for a full year, at least test it out in some way for a semester to see if we would have less referrals. I stand by him 100%. These are my remarks.
Okay. Well, can I get an adjournment?
Madam President, make a motion to adjourn?
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez, second by Smith. Our next date and time for the next school board meeting is May the 13th at the administration building. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.